Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that introduction. I'm very encouraged, A, that you have invited us here today. I think that sends a strong message of the intent of City Council to bite the bullet and do what's necessary to modernise transit in this city in conjunction with the state and other partners. But I'm also encouraged by your belief, or initial belief in me from what we've discussed so far, because I certainly don't intend to let you down in terms of that initial impression that I've certainly come here with a view to modernising transit, and that's what I intend to impart in the next few minutes as I take you through a presentation. So I appreciate that some of you have seen this before, but there are elements that are updated. So I will go through it briefly because obviously the whole point is that you get the chance to ask questions of us. But I think we all understand the context. Back in 2017, the governor rightly put the MTA into a state of emergency as a result of a number of very high-profile incidents and a decline, a long-term decline, in the reliability of the system that culminated in those very high-profile incidents. At that time, I was the CEO, the chief executive, of the Toronto Transit Commission, and I actually served on the panel or appeared on the panel for the, that preceded the Genius Challenge. So I was present when the state of emergency was announced. I knew that I was in the running for this position, but it didn't faze me because in 30 years of transit, I've always been attracted to challenges. The challenge doesn't come any bigger than New York, and this is a city that I've loved since the first time I came here in 1994, on honeymoon, actually. It's a wonderful place, it's somewhere I've always wanted to live, and this is the job to which I always aspired, the biggest, toughest job in world transit right now. But I certainly don't underestimate it, and I recall very clearly arriving into this position on January 17th of this year, and I thought very carefully about what I would say. And having done my due diligence, what I said was the following: that the challenge really wasn't tinkering with the system, it wasn't that it needed to be tweaked, a few improvements here and there. What was needed was a top-to-bottom modernisation of New York City Transit in every aspect of its operation, its customer service, its prevailing culture, its infrastructure and its processes. And that we needed to focus on four things, and those I will outline in this presentation. We needed to transform the subway, and by doing that, we need to bite the bullet and completely re-signal the subway to provide exponentially greater reliability and to provide more capacity. We need to get people back riding the buses because there's been a precipitous decline in bus ridership, driven largely by alternative forms of transit, but also by the fact that the streets are so congested. The third element, I think the people would have predicted that I'd have said the first two. The third element, I think, caught some people by surprise. I feel very strongly that we should push on to make the subway as fully accessible in as short a timeframe as possible. And the fourth element, which is kind of my signature piece, is the glue that holds everything together. Anyone can modernise a transit system, but to make it truly world-class, you also have to have the right culture, the right accountability, and the right transparency, and the right processes. So there needed to be that fourth element, and again, I will talk about those in turn. But certainly, I would say that at the moment, we're still in that state of emergency, we still have more to do, and every day, the system literally gets older, the infrastructure gets older, the pressure on the system increases, so the need to bite the bullet and to deliver this plan becomes ever more compelling. When I arrived, the Subway Action Plan was already underway. That was instituted by former Chair Joe Lotta back in the summer of 2017. And the Subway Action Plan, which is partly funded, jointly funded by both the city and the state, and we're very grateful for the city for coming forward with its contribution to the funding effort, has largely focused, and rightly focused, on stabilising the system. In other words, arresting that precipitous decline in subway reliability and addressing largely infrastructure issues. You can see on the screen there some of the statistics, I won't read them all out, but we have been fixing leaks, we have been tightening up on the way we manage track defects, fixing signal defects, maintaining our cars in a more reliable fashion, all with a view to not only arresting that decline in reliability and punctuality, but in turning the corner. And the good news is that that focus on infrastructure is bearing fruit. So you'll see from the performance trends in the middle of the slide before you, that major incidents are down by more than one-third since the Subway Action Plan was initiated. Major incidents, definition being incidents that delay 50 trains or more. On-time performance, back in October, we announced that on-time performance had hit a three-year record high. That's for weekday performance. For weekend performance, it actually hit a four-year high. I set my team a target, somewhat an arbitrary target, but it was deliberate, it was provocative. I set my team a target of cutting the number of delay incidents by 10,000 every month by the year end, by the end of this year. For the third month in a row, we have beaten that target. And so monthly delays are trending down. In addition to Subway Action Plan, which largely focused on what I would call fixing things, we've also instituted a real back-to-basics campaign where we are looking at the basics of running a subway, things that I've learned over 30 years of working in subways in London, on British Rail, in RailCorp in Sydney, Australia, in the Toronto Transit Commission, and now here. And that is making sure that you get your dwell times right, in other words, the time spent in stations, in getting to the root cause of delays, and not focusing on euphemisms like customer overcrowding. Overcrowding is the result, not the root cause, so we've been really focusing on root causes. In addressing why the signal system has less capacity than it used to have, so we've been progressively taking out unnecessary speed restrictions. We've run a campaign called Save Safe Seconds, and that is what has driven the reduction in delay incidents. We're most certainly still prioritising safety, but I don't think that speed and safety are incompatible. In addition to all of that, we've also focused on the customer experience, and I should have said in starting that to my left here, to your right is my Chief Customer Officer, Sarah Meyer, and to my right is Tim Mulligan, who's our Senior Vice President for Operations Support. And Sarah's job is to advocate for our customers, her job is to stick up for the customers and to drive forward elements of customer experience, so more on that to follow. So that was the Subway Action Plan. But what I did know in arriving here, again, back to my earlier point, it wasn't about tweaking things, it wasn't just about the Subway Action Plan. The Subway Action Plan is good in that it maintains, it arrests the decline, and it gets back to where we can be within the limitations of current infrastructure, and that's the key point. It can only do as best as the current infrastructure allows. It only allows us to go so far in terms of improving New Yorkers' experience. What's really needed isn't maintaining the status quo, it's pushing on and completely modernising this system in as short a timeframe as possible. And for that, we needed a plan, and this is that plan, the Fast Forward Plan. People said to me when I first got here, well, one of the problems with the MTA is you don't really have a plan. You talk about the need to improve, but there's no plan. There's a budget, but there isn't a plan. Well, we now do have that plan. That plan was put together within 100 working days of us coming together as a new senior team, and it is a comprehensive plan, it is an ambitious plan, and it, within a record timescale, it can deliver world-class transit to this city. So what does it do? It completely modernises New York City Transit from top to bottom in every aspect. Obviously, it does what you'd expect it to do, it overhauls the infrastructure, and I will come on to talk about that momentarily. But in addition to improving the infrastructure, which to me is only a third of the challenge, it also overhauls our processes, which talks directly, Mr. Chairman, to your point about you need to see that our processes are indeed overhauled, that we are more transparent, that we can be trusted to spend the money that you give us, that we can be trusted to be transparent and crystal-clear in everything that we do and upfront with our customers and our stakeholders. But also that we overhaul existing culture so that you truly feel valued as customers when you write the system. So my mantra has always been that to modernise a transit system, it's about people, it's about processes, and it's about culture. You need to do all three. So let's cut to the chase then. In the first five years of Fast Forward, subject to funding, we will be able to modernise the signalling system. The single most transformative thing that we can do for this subway is to re-signal it, to provide completely modernised signalling. And where, not so long ago, and I'll come on to this point in further detail, someone made the point that if we continue to just re-signal one line at a time, and each line takes about seven years, if you do the math, it's going to take about 40 to 50 years, which is ridiculous. So we've revisited the way that we would re-signal, and we're saying that within five years, subject to funding, we can modernise the signalling on another five lines. We would really push along with modernising our fleet, new subway cars, new buses. We would make more than 50 additional stations accessible, and that is a doubling of the current rate, we're doing around 25 at the moment, so we would double that to 50. We would redesign all of the bus routes in all five boroughs. We've redesigned the express bus network in Staten Island, and Councilmember Rose and I were hearing last night where we heard much about that. But we will push on and redesign all 321 bus routes within three years. We'd introduce a new fare payment system, no more MetroCard, a modern, fit-for-purpose, smart card system whereby you tap and go, and we would introduce more buses.
Then 1,200 CBTC bus car.
Yes.
From what total, what is... I wanted to interject now. It's not a plan to stop for you to finish, but looking at this number right now, and I know that the signal system is one of the top priorities that we both understand that had to be done. So how many cars should be upgraded with signal system? And this number, how can we compare that 1,200 to whatever total?
Okay. If you let me just go a couple more slides, I'll answer that question, because at the moment, we have two lines on CBTC. This is equipping cars to accommodate CBTC, Communications-Based Train Control, within five years, just bear with me. So just setting the high-level scene a bit further, within the following five years, I'm sorry, within the following five years, another six lines on modern signalling for a total of 11 over the 10 years. Another 130 stations made accessible, and that's 180 stations over the 10 years. Another 150 stations completely renovated, so that plus the 150 in the first five years is 300 stations completely modernised within the 10 years. And by modernised, I'm not talking about aesthetics, I'm not talking about cosmetics, I'm talking about fundamental rebuilds of stations to make them modern, to make them pleasant and safe and fit for purpose for the next 50 to 100 years. Another 3,000 new subway cars, another 2,100 brand-new buses. So let's talk about signalling then, and I can now answer your question, Mr. Chairman, in the next few slides. So the, as again, I reiterate, the single most transformative thing that we can do to transform the subway itself and the subway riders' experience is to re-signal the subway. Yes, we need new track, we're working on that. We need to maintain the drainage, we need to maintain stations, we need to maintain pumps and all the various other things that you need to make a subway work. But the thing that's holding us back is the signalling system, because the signalling system, as it stands, is safe, but it's very constrained in the number of trains that you can run, and it's very constrained in terms of its inherent reliability, because it's now, in some places, nearly 100 years old. We have signal frames that are nearly 100 years old. That is unprecedented. So we need to bite the bullet. So we have reorganised the way that we're going to re-signal this subway. If you recall, I said that doing the current math, it would take about 50 to 60 years. When I came in, I said to my team, why? Let's start afresh, let's look at this in a fresh perspective, work on new assumptions. Assume you can do more than one line at once. Assume that you will get multiple weekend closures in order to undertake the work. Minimize the amount of customisation of the product. The more you fiddle and the more you customise a product, the signalling product, the more risk you introduce, the more time you introduce, and the more cost you introduce. Minimize the interfaces between the signalling system and the cars, keep it simple. And also, don't just focus on the state of good repair, which was the running order in which we were doing the line, so doing the oldest ones first. Also, we should look to address those with the greatest need for additional capacity. So that's what we're going to do. So this diagram shows you the current number of lines with CBTC, and it's very up-to-date because we just this week, or last week actually, we just completed the initial installation of CBTC onto the seven line. We already had it on the L line, the Canarsie line, the flushing line, number seven, the purple line up there, has just, we've just finished the final rollout, the final cutover of CBTC on that line. We still have some further software upgrades to do, but that's now two lines on modern signalling. So to your question, we currently have enough cars CBTC-equipped to operate those two lines. What we also need is more power on the L line to run the full number of trains to the full capacity of that signalling system. So one of the upsides of the upcoming tunnel closure for the L line between Brooklyn and Manhattan, one of the upsides is we will be increasing the number of substations so that we can run more trains. But the, as is situation today, is that there are 900,000 daily customers on CBTC lines. If you keep an eye on the map, within five years, this is what the map could look like. And that takes us up to now 3 million daily riders, daily customers on CBTC lines. And what you'll see in there is a number of the very heavily-used lines, so the four, five, and six, which you can see there in the middle of Manhattan, 149th Street, Grand Concourse to Nevin Street, we can have that upgraded to CBTC, the core trunk section of the Lexington line can be upgraded within that first five years. Plus, as you've seen, elements of the E, F, M, and R lines, the F line, the AC and the E, and the G line. Colleagues around the world have already said to me, are you sure you can do that? That is unprecedented, so I do want you to understand that we are really pushing the boundary here. But we believe that that is achievable, we can do that within five years. If you watch the map, this is what can be achieved within the second five years for a cumulative total of 10. So we've now moved from 900,000 riders a day to 5 million daily riders on modern signalling out of a total of 5.7 million. So that's 90% of customers of the New York City subway would be on modern signalling. So two further points to make. You may well be sitting there thinking, well, hang on a minute, what about the other sections of line? Well, again, I reiterate that there's a science behind the way we've chosen the lines, it's based upon an amalgam of state of good repair, how old the existing system is, and also the greatest need in terms of capacity. So those bits that aren't shown on this map are either in a better state of good repair, they're more modern, or they have less capacity constraints, and they would be addressed in the third tranche of five years, so that within 15 years, the entire net subway was remodelled. However, here's the good news. It's possible that we could re-signal the whole subway more quickly, more cheaply, and less intrusively, if, as I think is increasingly likely, an emerging technology called ultra-wideband does prove to be safe and viable. And when I first heard about ultra-wideband, I was somewhat sceptical because it seemed too good to be true. You don't need to do so much work on the cars, you don't need to put so much equipment in the tunnel, and therefore, it's quicker, cheaper, and less intrusive to install the equipment. So contained within my plan, although the plan is predicated on known technology, and it has to be, we have to go with what is known and proven from a safety perspective right now. If ultra-wideband does prove to be viable, then we can reduce the cost and we can get the lines re-signalled more quickly and with way less weekend interruptions, so that's good news. So we're following a parallel path of progressing with CBTC whilst actively working with two suppliers to see if ultra-wideband is indeed a viable alternative technology. It's not all about re-signalling. Transforming the subway is also about getting exponentially better at the basics, and I've largely covered these points. So the fact that reliability is turning the corner, we have now just hit three months in a row of reduced subway delay incidents, we have a much better handle of root cause of those incidents, so that we tackle the right things and we assign the appropriate remedies. We're completing work more quickly, does mean that progressively, my job, our job as a team, is day by day to make things better. So what have we done so far? This is progress for 2018. We've introduced, you talk about accountability. If you go to any subway station today, you will see a poster up on the wall which went up within the last two months with a photograph of the group station manager. It's a job I used to do, it's a job I did in London. I was the group station manager for King's Cross Station, the busiest tube station in London. And it is a role that assigns around 20 stations to 22 different group station managers, so that you as council members have a one-stop shop for what goes on in your community. Just talk to your local group station manager. They are responsible for two angles or two lines of work, to make sure that we deliver excellent customer service through the customer-facing employees, and that we drive up the appearance and the maintenance and the cleanliness of the stations under their remit. So what have they been up to? Already, we have deep cleaned 15 stations, we are having a blitz on customer restrooms, and we have improved the facilities at six stations so far, more to come. We have been making repairs at over 25 of our most problematic switches. Again, going back to root cause, you should look on a ProRata basis on a, what's the expression, the, there's a way of looking at it, it's a Pareto basis, sorry, Pareto basis where you look at which are your worst performers and you assign the corrective actions at the worst performers, which are the most impactful switches and which are the ones that cause you the most problems. So we now assign what's called Pareto analysis to make sure that we do that properly. We have corrected, made signal modifications to those signals that weren't working properly and that unnecessarily delayed customers. So we've just increased the speed on a number of lines, and we've also made some operational changes to safety speed up service. So that's subways. Buses, the second of the four priorities that I announced, I've already mentioned that we will redesign the bus network in all five boroughs over the next three years. We're working very closely with the city and the NYPD to improve traffic enforcement. Existing bus lanes, far too often, I use buses regularly, far too often are blocked by people delivering stuff, by people double parking, by people dropping other people off. Bus lanes are there for a reason, obviously, we've got to help businesses thrive, but the bus lanes must be kept clear if our buses are to have a fighting chance of getting through traffic. In addition, working with our colleagues at the DOT, installing more traffic signal priority equipment on traffic lights so that it gives buses priority getting through key intersections. We've announced that once the smart card is installed, we will speed up boarding by allowing rear door boarding. There wasn't going to be readers on the back doors, which is ridiculous, so we've instituted a change, instead, there must be readers installed on the back doors for no additional cost. We can accommodate that within the budget, and so that once smart card is available, you can legitimately board at the back. We're having targeted action on corridors to look at where the delays are happening to bus routes. Typically, it's not the whole route, there tends to be bottlenecks on the routes, so we're addressing those, and we're pushing on towards an all-electric fleet as quickly as we possibly can once the technology is proven. Again, progress already, I've touched on some of this, I'm very grateful to NYPD for the work that they've done with us to date on targeting improvements on specific bus routes. We've relaunched or redesigned the Staten Island Bus Express network, and that's still very much a work in progress. Some people love it, some people aren't so happy, so we're continuing to make changes to that network. We've kicked off the Bronx Bus Network redesign, and that's the first of the major borough redesigns. We've done the express network for Staten Island, we'll come back and do the local network later. We've expanded off peak service on five routes. We are continuing to do the traffic signal priority upgrades on particular bus routes across the city, and pushing on making sure that priority routes are improved across the whole city, not just in particular boroughs. Accessibility, this was the third of the four priorities. And it is just plain wrong that our subway system is not fully accessible. We must address that at the city, it's an equity issue, it's something I feel very strongly about. Right now, we have 119 accessible stations. In itself, that sounds like quite a lot, and if you compare it to other networks, it's probably the most in terms of quantum. But we have 472 stations, and so therefore, the actual percentage is nowhere near so impressive, it's only around 25%, and that's simply not acceptable. However, with targeted action, we can within five years get to a position where you are no more than two stops away from an accessible station, no more than two stops away from an accessible station within just five years. How do we do that? By scientifically infilling gaps. So we look at demographics, we look at where there are gaps in the accessible network, and we look at key interchange stations, and we consult with the accessible community to make sure that we do the right stations. What else are we doing? We want to see more direct accesser ride routes. At the moment, a regular complaint from accesser ride riders is that you get taken on a very circuitous route around the boroughs, so we're redesigning the network to give you more direct routes. We've launched an app so that you can know where your ride is, when it's coming, and we're providing sensitivity training to all 50,000 employees of New York City Transit, including executives. Let's have another look at the map. These blobs represent where the current stations are, the existing stations, 119, and as you can see, there are huge gaps in the network. Please watch the map. Within just five years, and this is indicative, this isn't saying where they will go, but it's to prove a point of what the network could look like. This is what the network could look like within five years with an additional 50, as you see, the blobs have increased, and that would take you to no more than two stops away from an accessible station, which is light years from where we currently are. If you keep watching the map, this is what we could have within just 10 years with another 130, which means we would be within striking distance of a fully accessible network, and rightly so. What have we done to date? In a first for the MTA, we have a full-time accessibility adviser, a guy called Alex Elagudin, who used to be the TLC Accessibility Advisor himself, a wheelchair user, where Sarah represents the customer, Alex represents the accessibility or the disabled community. And he has already initiated a raft of activity. We've been undertaking surveys of all the remaining inaccessible stations to identify what the cost would be to update them, to upgrade them, to make them accessible, and how complex that would be. We've been working on the existing system, providing better static signage at the stations, providing better information, e-information, information on your phone so that you know if an elevator's not working, what your alternatives are. We've been pushing ahead on making the existing elevators work more effectively, keeping them in service and keeping them clean, and we've been pushing on with the design of new stations as part of our existing capital programme. Nearly done. Finally, the fourth of the four priorities. The glue that holds us all together is to engage and empower employees. There's 50,000 of us. I think their staff that work at Transit are fabulous, I've been very impressed with the employees that I now work with, but I've iniquely determined that we should all up our game. Every single one of us needs to up our game to provide consistently excellent customer service that is worthy of the service that we should provide to New Yorkers. So we've reorganised the executive. It's very important that we have a structure with the right people in the right jobs, with the right skill sets and the right mandates. We equally are paying great attention to show the employees that we value them. I believe that a happy workforce gets things done. I don't believe in coercion, I don't believe in big-stick management, it might achieve things in the short term, but we're revising the way we provide discipline to be more corrective rather than punitive. We're listening to our employees in terms of getting their ideas and getting them to innovate, and we're also pushing on with... Uh, and we're also pushing on with, uh, 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 accelerating our approaches to diversity and inclusion. There are three themes that run through the whole plan and you touched upon one in your intro. You will not trust us with the money that we're seeking for fast forward if we do things the way we've always done them and we get back. We have to change the way we do things and that's not just for New York City Transit, it's for the whole of the MTA. So we've already taken steps to, uh, to make ourselves more accountable. We've launched a number of new dashboards. Certainly for New York City Transit, we have revised our actual ballpark that gets seen publicly, uh, every, uh, every month. Uh, we're overhauling, under the leadership of Pat Foy, the president of the MTA, we're overhauling our processes to make ourselves more efficient. We're streamlining procurement to attract more businesses, more, uh, delivery partners to come and work with us. We're addressing, uh, the need, the needs of innovation, setting up an innovation unit so that we get more companies wanting to work with us and adopting best practice from across the world. And we've introduced new dashboards so that you, the stakeholders and the, uh, the public representatives can see what we're doing. Safety and security residency, obviously absolutely critical. It's not an initiative, it runs throughout the whole program. Uh, working with NYPD in addition to the group station manager programs, we now have neighborhood community officers at each of our stations and those people's, uh, contact details are again up at the stations next to the group station managers. We've launched a safety hotline. Uh, we have, uh, we continue to do work post-superstorm Sandy to make our system more reliable and we are increasing our, uh, focus on sustainable practices to make ourselves more environmentally friendly. Four more slides. Under Sarah's leadership, uh, we have an ongoing theme, it's not an initiative, of excelling at customer service. So, um, we, we have increased the amount of customer service that we're, uh, training that we're doing. We've increased the number of, uh, people at the rail control center who put out real-time information on via social media. We have been increasing the amount of announcements that we may vote on trains and stations and improving employee, uh, uh, community engagement through the deployment of group station managers. So again, a quick update on progress, we're not holding back. A lot of, a lot of what needs to be done, we can do right now. Sarah is appointed. We launched the MyMTA map, uh, app, sorry, so that you can see real time what's happening on your, uh, on the transit system. We've reduced the MetroCard claim processing times by 70%. It used to be something like 21 days to get, uh, to get your, um, claim processed, it's now seven days. We've launched a customer commitment and consistent with what we said about improving information, remarkably around 70 stations didn't have, uh, didn't have public address facilities at all. So we've progressively begun installing though, that equipment in those stations that don't currently have it. So this would be my summary. We're at a crossroads. Uh, we could stop, we could, uh, continue doing what we're doing in terms of the subway action plan, things would definitely get better, but they would be held back within the limitations of the current capital plan and the limitations of the current signaling system. So yes, things would be better, they would be stabilized, but they would be nowhere near the world-class system that New York really needs. Or we can adopt the fast-forward plan. As the chairman said, it comes at a cost, but my view would be, um, the, the real cost is not to bite the bullet. If we don't bite the bullet, the infrastructure will only get older, the pressure on it will only get, uh, more intense as New York grows and the population increases. And the cost of it, because if the need won't go away, the cost will only get higher. But if we bite the bullet, we have the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to move from a state of emergency to state-of-the-art transit within 10 years, which put another way, is less than 4,000 days. Thank you.
Thank you to your team for how helpful also you were during the transit tour that we did and, and everyone out from our original team and the whole team, you were very helpful as we spent 24 hours in the trains a few months ago, listening from the riders. All right, I got three questions, my colleague on them, they gotta leave and I'm gonna give hand the opportunity first and then I can back down. Go ahead. Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Let me, let me ask you, who's your boss?
My boss is the managing director of the MTA, Ronnie Haken.
Who's responsible as a whole for you right now?
I'm sorry.
Who's responsible right now? I mean, who's the big boss?
Uh, well ultimately, the way I look at it, it's not meant to be a clever answer, but ultimately New Yorkers are my boss because I've come here to, to transform Transit. But on a purely hierarchical basis, my boss is the managing director of the MTA. Uh, ultimately the chairman of, of the MTA and the board set the direction for me.
Let me, let me, let me see if you could, let me start one of these. On June 29th, 2017, Governor Andrew Cuomo declared the subway system was in a state of emergency. Do you, as of now, do you think that that statement still, oh, having proved that it was down or weak or broken or it even gotten worse?
Well technically the state of emergency hasn't been rescinded, so technically the, the, uh, the executive order still applies. And that, that order was put into place so that the MTA could take expedited action to address the deficiencies that led to the imposition of the state of emergency. My, my view would be that, um, uh, we are state, we're doing what the subway action plan was set, was set out to do. We have stabilized the system, the number of major incidents as an average.
My question, my question, is this getting worse or?
No, it's getting better. So there's, so, but if you look at the data, the service is, is improving.
By me, no, you could take all my time and just, just yes or no?
Yes.
It gotten better? According to you, it gotten better?
Yes, lots more to do.
And July 25th, 1927, man, uh, 2017, Chairman Liotta announced a plan to stabilize, stabilize and improve the subway system. The plan was called Subway Action Plan. So at that time, uh, up to divide, uh, vigil, uh, vigil, uh, indicate that that plan has spent 333 million and, and in higher, an additional 1,100 workers. However, however, the two metric that we used to, to, to measure improvement were, uh, something called weight assessment and the other was called on time performance. But according to the report, both of those, the weight assessment and the on-time performance, they have gone worse?
No, no. So, um, councilmember, in October, we announced in October, they, now that I, I'm familiar with this, these statistics, in October, the average for the, for the wait time was the best for three years for weekdays, the best for, um, and on-time performance, sorry, was the best for, uh, three years on weekend, on weekdays and the best for four years on weekends. The average wait time on both on platforms and stations was decreased and the number of major incidents was also decreased. It does fluctuate.
Maybe in 2016, the weight assessment was 78.1%. In 2017, it was, it came down to 75.9. Now this year, it went down to 71.9%. So how, how, how do you call that improvement?
The figure I'm quoting is, uh, I'm comparing pre-SAP to post-SAP figures and the October data does show that the number of major incidents was, uh, decreased, the wait time was decreased and the on-time punctuality was the best for three years. That's the October statistics, as publicly reported.
So this, so this statistic I wrote?
I, I don't have the benefit of seeing what you're looking at, I can only go on these, the publicly declared statistics at the October board meeting.
I wanted you to weigh assessment time has, has?
For, for the October data, what showed an improvement in the wait time statistics, correct?
And what about on-time performance?
On-time performance was the best for three years on weekdays, the best for, uh, weekend for four years. So we're not saying the job is done. What we are saying is that because of this relentless, uh, attention to detail via the subway action plan and the complimentary back-to-basics campaign that we've introduced because I felt that was missing progressively, although it does fluctuate, uh, it is, uh, it is turning the corner and getting better. But you won't get the step change unless we bite the bullet and do what's really necessary, which is re-signal and renew the infrastructure.
Two more questions, I feel. Since you, since, since the action, so we action plan took effect to now, wow. What would say we need the, the, the percentage of improvement on, on time performance?
Sorry, say again, what's the increase in?
Oh, the percentage of improvement, according to you.
Well, so let me give you some statistics. Major incidents have decreased 11.7%. Uh, average platform time and average train time have improved 2018 versus 2017. Service delivered has reached the highest level since the measure was introduced and is now at 95.8%. And the subway car, um, average mean distance between failure has improved, it's now 122,000 instead of 115,000. So it's important to look at a suite of measures because where on, on-time performance, I get is what people understand because is, is my train on time or not? On-time performance measures, I, is, does the train reach its destination, the end of the line on time? It is one measure, it's not the only measure, we need to look at all of them.
Thank you, my time is up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's be clear, first of all, like, great plan, great vision, but do you also understand that you took a leadership position in an agency where riders, with all our rights, are frustrated?
Very much so.
And that we expect the action and progress as just a day.
Uh, I am crystal clear on that, Chairman.
So I, I think that that's, I can say that for me and for many New Yorkers, you know, and it's difficult to earn their trust in our city because New Yorkers, by definition, we are individual, we have opinion, you know, a strong opinion. And we all participate. And during the time of social media, which is, you know, the new leadership, and I chose you, I chose Freddie Ferret for his contribution that he had made in our society. And as a Latino who I am, he makes me very proud also to know that we have someone also from the same Caribbean islands where we're coming from, that is in a good leadership position. But I think that the most important thing is, and the governor said in his speech when he presented some of this, a direction for where the MTA should be going, which is, we need to take this system and we need to fix it. And I feel that in a society where we being able to make the basic thing, the fair fair, to build a Mario Formo bridge, to take La, see LaGuardia going through important progress, I think that this is one of this legacy that all of us should make it. And I think that we need to do whatever it takes to really work on these five years. The question is, you know, what is the experience, what are you putting in place? And I get the distribution with the plan. For me, I, it was not in the eighties and the nineties that to build a toilet, it cost like $500. That's what the orders said. Like, still today I see the MTA, and I'm talking about the new plan because now it's all about presenting the vision, presenting the plan, we need to get the revenue in place. But how can we guarantee the taxpayer that we will be spending, we're gonna be focusing on a repair and maintenance and that we're gonna be giving the best use to every single dollar of the taxes?
So, and, and we're very clear on that, Chairman. The, uh, the new leadership at the MTA, if you think about it, pretty much everyone in the senior positions is new to their, either new to the company or new to their role. Uh, certainly the five, um, agency presidents. Um, we're very clear that we need to change the way we do business. Uh, we have various work streams underway. We've got a working group that's looking at transparency and the way that we, uh, share what we do with you. We've got another group that's looking at cost containment to tackle this, um, this much documented issue around the fact that NYC jobs, uh, and, and major projects cost more than they do comparatively in, in major cities elsewhere in the world. We've got another work stream going to look at our procurement practices to not only streamline them, to make them, um, to make them shorter so that we procure things more quickly, but also, and this speaks to your earlier point from your press conference, to attract other bidders back into the mold so that where, uh, other companies have, um, have given up on dealing with the MTA, we want to attract them back because now it's easy to do business with us, uh, that we are more dynamic, that our processes and our procurement is that much more streamlined. Uh, and then the final stream would be with the various, um, uh, the various, uh, transparency measures we've taken, things like dashboards, you should be able to and you should demand to see pretty much, uh, in granular detail how we're spending the money. The one point I would make is that, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? If you, if you are so concerned about the past because you feel that we haven't been transparent enough or we haven't proved worthy of your trust, that you won't now invest, well, we'll, we'll kind of grind to a hole, we, we won't make a change. Someone has to make a leap of faith. We've got the plan, we've got new management, uh, and with new transparency tools and means by which you can hold us to account, absolutely hold us to account, this is our golden opportunity and we shouldn't miss, miss it. But, but someone has to take that leap of faith or we are condemning New Yorkers to the status quo and I don't think anyone wants to do that.
Do you think that, based on the number, I don't know if you have that in front of you, if now you can show it off, have we, have we seen a reduction of crimes in the train stations?
Um, well, there's different ways of measuring crime. Generally subway levels of crime are at a low level, a record low level. Um, the, the, the individual constituent parts of the different types of crime get reported every four weeks at the, uh, New York City Transit Committee. Uh, and the, the police chief is, is held to account for that. But generally it's a very safe system actually. When you look at statistically, we carry 8 million people a day, the actual number of crimes is very, very low.
So do you think that the number has been reduced, let's say this year and as we are getting close to our 2018?
Over recent years, the crime rate has come down.
So enforcement, especially in bus lane, how, you talk about that you have this call with the NYPD on how they will improve their role to do enforcement?
I think this is.
How does, can you describe what the new, what those discussion is, what about, and how does that translate into new changes that we, that we would see in the street? You know, again, those drivers that they are parking, it doesn't matter who they are, NYPD, city workers, any drivers unless it's an emergency, should not be parked in a bus lane. So how that plan, how that new way of enforcement would translate into what should we expect to see?
Okay. So, um, that, we have to get the message across that parking in a bus lane is unacceptable, that it's selfish and that it won't be tolerated. It, it's just, it's not acceptable. If the bus lane is there for good reason, it's to get the buses through. So to me, you need to have, um, a suite of measures in order to make that happen. You've got to make sure that people understand that, that you've got adequate signage, you've got to have, uh, the police properly targeted to treat it as a priority. You know, you see NYPD throughout the city, so I want them to take a very active role, not to be passive, but to be actively looking out for, uh, infractions of, um, bus lane blockages and people shouldn't be doing it, they should be being told to move on straight away. I think there should be a very, uh, robust penalty mechanism for people, particularly if they're repeat offenders, people who keep parking in bus lanes. And then finally, we want to seek more authority to have, uh, both static cameras observing bus lanes and, and particular key interchanges, intersections, but also to have forward-facing buses on our cameras such that you could, uh, um, real-time record offenders. Because the police aren't be everywhere, but to have a mechanism whereby we actually have recordings of vehicles that are offending, I think would send the message, if you park in a bus lane, you are, you are. you are almost certain to be found out and there will be a very hefty penalty. So you need the two elements, the deterrent and the penalty.
That's great. What I will add, and I translate it into the question is, will we expect an increase of men and women dedicated to enforcement? And I don't expect, I'm not asking for a police officer to be, to live a sin or a crime where he or she are assigned and then is go and do anything else. But yesterday, you talk about, I mean, the NTA, I say, agency. You address like the millions of dollars that the agency is losing because some people not paying the fare, right? What was the amount?
The amount, two hundred and fifteen million dollars per hour.
So I think that it is important also to quantify, you know, the negative impact of those drivers who are blocking the buses.
Absolutely.
And put the dollars amount on the value of time that how many individuals, average, do we expect are getting late? Because people are blocking our buses. And at the same time, if we put the dollars amount, do we need to create a new unit only to be dedicated to enforcement? And if we dedicate a new unit here to do that in the bus lane, can we be able to raise the revenue to pay for that group of people that the only thing they would do is enforcement? Can the New York City traffic, as we are now negotiating the project, come to us and say, we need additional hundred individuals only to be dedicated to enforce in the bus lane? And for me, it's about like, few years ago, there were some mayors that came through, you know, from different part of work. And one of the question that I asked in this case of Vision Zero was about, what do you think about area where the city can do better to get our goal, to reduce to zero the number of people being killed by, in a crash? And the answer was enforcement. So if we know that enforcement will make a big difference to take a rider on time, and therefore can incentivize and provide a better experience for people saying, no, I don't wanna be just walking because sometimes I get from A one point to the other faster just walking because they're both being blocked by drivers. So I just want to highlight that.
That's good. So to manage this response to that. So as a team, and I hope this came across in the presentation, we're not saying that New Yorkers, sorry folks, you have to wait five years, ten years, you have to spend billions of dollars in order to get improvement. A lot of improvement on both the subway and the bus can happen and is happening right now. And that is through better management focus and in the context of what we're now discussing, better direction to our colleagues at the police NYPD and particularly the Transit Bureau to direct them on what we want them to focus on. So we are focusing them on, increasingly have been and still are and will continue to do so, on actively managing bus lanes, on actively managing fare evasion. Let me just come back to bus lanes. One of the advantages of having worked elsewhere is you see what works elsewhere. And one thing I think we should consider, in the UK, there are different ways of managing what I call arterial routes, key routes. And on some roads, there are yellow lines, on some lines, on some roads, there are double yellow lines. But in London, you also have what are called red routes. A red route, and the lines are painted on the road red deliberately to denote that it's a red route and there's signage around it. A red route, every Londoner, you go and ask any Londoner, what is a red route, and they know. Don't even think about stopping on a red route. You will definitely get caught, you will almost certainly get towed, and the fine is huge. Don't even think about it. So the red routes in London work really well. And because they're there for a reason, they're to keep the traffic flowing and they're to keep public transit flowing. So it might be something that we want to consider, so that it's very, very clear, don't even think about stopping in that particular corridor. And I think that's the kind of message that we've got to get across. So I think your idea about quantifying the impact of selfish parking is a good one. And I certainly am about innovative thinking. I wouldn't rule out having a dedicated enforcement unit with our colleagues at DOT, with our colleagues at NYPD, whatever it takes. We are pushing NYPD very hard with early results on key routes. We're doing them one at a time to figure out where are the bottlenecks on each route to keep the buses moving? We will never get people back riding the buses while they're hopelessly caught in traffic.
Do you understand why most New Yorkers don't support a fare hike?
Fare hikes aren't popular anywhere, anywhere I've worked. No one wants a fare hike. And people certainly don't want a fare hike when they don't think they're getting the service. The dilemma we face at the NTA is that absent new revenue streams, we have a looming budget gap that we have to fill. So, you know, what we urgently need are new, sufficient, affordable, sustainable revenue streams.
But I, and again, I know that your role is to be the management of the agency and put in the vision, translate the vision into the changes that we need or that we have to play or raising the revenue. And but I, as I said before, that you understand that there's real concrete plan on the table on congestion price, taxes on the millionaire, that if we are able to get the Senate and the governor's support with those plans, we don't have to move in the fare hike. And I think that the time we are selling to the Yorkers that they should support this plan, that they should trust the leadership, I feel that we are in the middle of great two plan on the table. You know, this is not yet a traditional time. I know that fare hike, all through the process, we had a hearing, people talk. At the end of the day, we know that that will happen. This proposal is happening at the time. But we are asking also New Yorkers, there's two additional plan. If you live in Queens and if you live in Brooklyn, yes, there's a reason why you should are concerned about congestion price. You need to know that how that money will be reinvested in your district. And I feel, and that's why I support it. Because I feel that with this plan, we will see real reinvestment of that money. That working class, middle class will benefit with a congestion price. So I think that, I hope, and I've been saying over and over again, I hope that, you know, you as the board understand it, that if we want to make a case of building a no support, no support, we owe the plan where we can raise the largest amounts of revenue that is needed from the NTA. So I hope that you really, and again, it's a whole, or reconsideration, the proposal for a fare hike.
Understood, and I hear you. Let me just make a couple of points by way of response, if I may. First of all, and I appreciate you all know this, as the president of New York City Transit, I do not have a say in the fare rise. The fare rise is a matter for the board of the NTA, and that process is still ongoing. We're doing the fare hearings, we're listening to what New Yorkers have said, what they think about the fare rise, what other options they might have. So that is a matter for the board. And what I do know, though, and what I will say is, again, I reiterate, what we absolutely urgently need is sustainable, affordable, predictable revenue streams to come in, not only to cover the operating expenditure, which is the day-to-day fares, but also to cover the capital cost of things like fast forward. So people often assume that a fare rise is going to pay for fast forward. It isn't. Congestion pricing is absolutely one of the mechanisms that will pay for fast forward because it will give us that predictable, substantial revenue stream that we need. So I'm very encouraged to see that there is a real momentum, I think, now behind congestion pricing. My answer would be that it's not the panacea, it's not in itself, it doesn't cover all of our needs. There will need to be other options looked at as well. And you as stakeholders, with your colleagues in state government and the feds for that matter, all have a part to play in that. And what I can also say is, I lived in London when the congestion charge was brought in. It was striking to see the impact on day one, absolutely striking. And I remember in the run-up to the congestion charge being rolled out, there were siren voices, people saying, it's not gonna work, people won't pay, people will cover up their license plates, the cameras won't work, people will get charged the wrong amount. Actually, it worked remarkably efficiently. And I remember the first day, walking, I lived in central London, seeing the streets were practically empty. It was remarkable how well it worked. And over time, though, the traffic levels did rise up again a bit, but not to the levels they had been. And where London has succeeded is that you have now a sweet spot between fewer vehicles on the road because people don't wanna pay the congestion charge. So that's good because there's less congestion, less pollution, the buses can get through the streets. But equally, because a lot of people are paying the congestion charge, that fee goes straight to transit. It cannot be siphoned off for anything else. It's lockbox to go to Transport for London. And that's the model that we should adopt. So again, I'm not saying congestion charging is the only solution, we need more than that. But that's the real answer to the NTA's funding woes.
I feel that we've been selling the dream to New Yorkers for decades, that we will upgrade the transportation system. So it's not the first time. I can say that this time around, in my few decades to be near, that this is like the more concrete one. But the beginning of the two thousand, NTA came around. And then they said that the system will be upgraded by twenty seventeen. And then in twenty seventeen, we were saying that it would take forty years.
Because of the money being done.
So this is about a lack of control that is real because it's based about coming over and over, and it's not yet the lack of resources because the NTA also been going through a lot of debt. You know, and that's we, New Yorkers, who owe the money. So I think that, you know, I can see a great combination right now. You as a leader being able to accomplish something, how difficult is it to earn the trust? Now, New Yorkers want to see results. The rest of them are starting now, and they're saying, we need SBS, we need BIC. It cannot be that the only train line that we have there, our buses are not connected with the trains. So this is something that is needed, is important. As we have in our Vision Zero, go by twenty thirty to reduce to zero the number of individuals being killed. When, what is the year that we can say, and this can be the initial of the plan, we say all the station will be accessible?
You asked, when will we be able to?
If we, it's only a suggestion, can we? I know in your plan make a lot of progress. But let me put it this way, Diamond Street. And I said before, if you want someone with disability and you need to go to Two Thirty First in the one train, and you live in the Diamond Houses, you know where you need to go? You need to go, take the A train, the one train, where there's only one elevator going downtown up there. And in that elevator, you need to go to Ninety Sixth Street. That's a next station going downtown with the elevator. Going to Ninety Sixth Street in order to take that one train back to go to Two Thirty First. And the thing is, the frustrating thing is about, even to put that elevator, it took fight, it took lawsuit, when we have nine hundred thousand New Yorkers who are in disability. So I think that, you know, I'm ready to fight with my colleague here to say, let's make the case. I'd like to say, if there's a real plan, I see the light in this plan. I don't want to say we need to raise the money, I don't want to say only that it's the congestion. I know that, I don't know what is the whole thing about this establishment? That is all about is one or the other? I feel there should be both plan, congestion and the taxes to the millionaire. But when it comes to making the station accessible, do you think that we should have a year in our plan? That we can say in the next five years, of course, another design plan for the next five years? When can we promise New Yorkers that we're gonna be working to turn all station as accessible as they should be?
Absolutely. So, right, so let me just unpack that a bit, if I may, and I'll answer that question. You asked earlier, why should you trust, not you personally necessarily, but you collectively? Why should New Yorkers trust the NTA? Because, you know, we've heard it all before. Well, the difference is, you haven't. You now have fresh thinking. Why is it that the re-signaling of the subway has been cut the timeline? Why is it that that's been cut by seventy-five percent? Sixty years to ten? Because we are approaching this in a different way. We're saying that there is a different, quicker way of doing it, and it could be quicker yet if UWB comes to pass. Why is it that suddenly we are saying that we can get to no more than two stops away from an accessible station within five years? And be within striking distance of a fully accessible system within ten years? Again, it's because of fresh thinking. And fresh thinking also includes things like, one of the reasons why elevator installations cost so much is because the NTA has in the past tended to have bespoke designs for each station. And in the design itself, I would argue, is somewhat gold-plated. So one of the things I've instructed my team to do is to come up with a robust, still fit for purpose, we're not talking about some cheap installation, but robust cookie cutter design that we could say, go and install one of those and just keep doing it, contractor or contractors. Just keep doing it, work along the line, just keep doing it. Innovative thinking, like maybe even have modular construction where the majority of the elevators shaft, etc., is built off-site, and then you bring it in and rapidly fit it at the location. So within that ten-year timeframe, if you do the math, we could have the current one hundred and nineteen plus fifty plus one hundred and thirty. You will be almost, almost complete of the four hundred and seventy-two stations on New York City Transit. I'd just like to make one other point, and this is where you come in, particularly because you represent city council and therefore you represent communities within this great city. The fast forward being blunt, the fast-forward plan will grind to a halt if everything we try to do, every installation we try to make, every elevator or every substation, because you need to provide more trains to get the benefit of new signaling, you need to, basically, with new signaling, you can run more trains. In order to run more trains, you need more power. In order to get more power, you need more substations. The trouble is, no one wants a substation in their community. Quite often, people don't want an elevator installation on their corner. If we have to have a six-month standoff for every single installation, that plan will not happen within the timeframe. So I absolutely have to make that point, I need your help to do that. But if we do bite the bullet with the fresh thinking that I hope you see in front of you, this is entirely achievable. This is our golden opportunity if we pull together and co-fund this project.
Okay, I can add that probably, as someone that had to go through all the briefing, you know, before you started from day one on running this agency, one particular piece, I would say that whoever gave the briefing was not accurate. This is about council member want to see elevators in the station. And they down with their supporter. We even down to put tablet to fucking down. What happened is that when I asked, let's say, for elevators in Diamond, so I said, well, it take twenty-five million dollars. What the hell, twenty-five million dollars? What has to be changed on procurement? What has to be changed in the red tape that has to be cut to reduce that amount? But I feel that again, as we have a goal by twenty thirty on reducing the number of people killed by car drivers here, I think it is important if we also continue looking at this plan and this is a right direction to go, to see, can we say that by twenty forty, all the station, that we make all the station accessible? You know, and I just suggest that you continue working with your plan, but put a day, put a year on when we should expect. To talk to those advocate for the disability community. Not only we will see a number of station being accessible now, but we have a goal on where we're complete and make all of them accessible.
It's entirely within our gift, it really is. We, as I said, by the ten-year mark, we would be within striking distance of having made all of the stations accessible. It would not take much longer to then finish the job off. There may be the odd station that is just physically impossible or because it would require a tenement building to be demolished, it would just be impossible. But I think it's entirely within our gift to have that fully accessible subway. But I think it's entirely within our gift to have that fully accessible subway within pretty much that 10-year timeframe. And so I didn't, I chose my words carefully on that first day. You know, as the president of Transit, you know you're going to be quoted. I was deliberately provocative in that respect because, you know, at the end of the day, this is meant to be a bold vision. It's not meant to be a sort of steady-as-she-go's plan. It's meant to be innovative and provocative and transformative. So that was the reason. I listed a fully accessible transit system as one of the four priorities that I described to you earlier.
And my last thing before, Councilmember Cool and Richard has a question that I want to bring to your attention, is one piece related to representation of engagement and empowerment in employment, employees. And my suggestion is have in mind that New York City, especially those of us who are Black and Latino, when it comes to see our people having opportunity to go through promotion in the leadership. And it's not, for me, it's not enough to say we have a great internship with Fernando Ferre, but as an organization, they are stronger than one individual. And I feel that when it comes to a city where, let's say, Angelo Falcón, who died, he is put it very well. New York City has 10,000 leadership positions and only 200 are Latino. And when you look to agencies, they say, lack of Black and Latino and female and women in leadership positions. So how can, in your leadership, what should we expect to see when it comes to diversity in leadership position of the MTA?
Okay. So this is a subject I feel very strongly about. I absolutely believe in promotion on merit. I don't believe in quotas because I feel that quotas can rebound against you in that they can be somewhat insulting to the people that you're trying to help. But what I do think you can do is take positive action. And where there are two people of equal merit up for one job, and one of the people in that competition comes from an underrepresented group, that's the definer. And so if I'm, I always say actions speak louder than words. If I could just describe my time at the Toronto Transit Commission, my previous job. I arrived in 2012. There had never been a woman, ever, on the executive of the Toronto Transit Commission since its inception in 1921. When I left the TTC, the executive was 50/50 men and women. How did we do it? And exactly the way I just described. Where there were two candidates of equal merit, and that was assigned both on gender and ethnicity, the underrepresented group got the position. Fast forward to now a New York City Transit. I said to you earlier, there had never been a person with a disability, a visible disability on an executive. There is now. I have a full-time accessibility advisor. That is an innovative first for the MTA. We have someone who himself is a wheelchair user. He got the job on merit. The chief customer officer, female. The chief people officer, female. We have people from ethnic minorities on my executive. So again, I stress that it's done on merit. I think it's insulting to do otherwise. But I do believe in positive action, and you can expect that to continue under my tenure.
This is the area that you need to be ready for making to be pushed back from me and many others, because this is not about quota, this is about recognizing that we live in a society where if you're Black and Latino, you don't have the same opportunity. It doesn't matter if you are, you can be a detective, working in a field, but you're going to be doing the same job. And you can see many faces of people being promoted. This is part of New York City. If you work in an agency, not even though Latino is 29%, and African-American is at 27%, it doesn't translate into the academic, government or the private sector, even though the merit is there. So unless we have uncomfortable conversation that we live in a city where the city is segregated based on opportunity in many fields, we will not address that problem. So I hope that you can look at it, you know, with a fresh ear, but there's a reality. We have people who are top engineers, top architects, they are ready to perform as they say as other. But many times, they are the first generation who are professional. They don't have a grandfather who was the profession the father needed. And those people sometimes, when it comes to leadership, and I talk about the entry job, we need to push that envelope. And as this is important, you know, any pieces, this is all about running the transportation system facing and safe, getting the first, the best men and women to do their job based on merit. But we need to push in the same conversation of the merit to bring leadership to every single seat that we have advantage.
Understood. So I just want to assure you, chairman, and the best way I can assure you is to look at my track record as a leader. If you look at the executives that I have set up, they absolutely are diverse. I recognize the benefits of diversity. And I also believe that New York City Transit, its makeup should reflect the city that it serves. So there's, again, there's science behind why one quarter of fast-forward, in addition to the bus element, the subway element, the accessibility element. I could have stopped there. But the fourth element is about management of people, it's about leadership, inspiration, development of people. And there are explicit commitments to furthering the diversity cause within the fast-forward plan.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cool, followed by Councilmember Richard.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, President. I'm Councilmember Cool, I'm from Foshan, Queens. We have a seven-train station, which is a railway busy station. So I want to talk about something about the CBTC. For most people, they don't know what CBTC stands for. So this is Communications-Based Train Control.
Right.
So on April 1st, 2016, I attended a seven-train town hall meeting hosted by a council member, Wembrima. During this meeting, we were given a handout which included information on our Communication-Based Train Control. On page 18 of the handout from the MTA states that the CBCT installation will be complete by the end of next year. The meeting was in 2016. The system was supposed to be installed by the end of 2017. The system is finally done, and it's already 2018 now. My questions are, I have three questions. So let me ask all the questions first, because of the time limit. Why was the installation delayed by over a year? Second question is, during the first week of CBTC, there were huge delays on the seven train. How was the MTA planning on addressing this so that it doesn't happen? Again, the third question is, is MTA looking to increase the number of express routes for Queens residents to alleviate congestion on the seven train? Personally, I was delayed on the train a few times. Many times, I was the second last stop. I would stay there. The train would stop there for half an hour, 15 minutes. I can walk home, though, for that time, but just too tired to walk, you know? And sometimes you start at Woodside, which is main station away. It gets stopped there for half hour. So I don't, I don't see, why have the new system, the trains often get delayed now? So how do you alleviate those problems?
Okay. Those are all extremely legitimate and very topical questions, Councilman. So let me just answer those in turn. But a little bit, a tiny bit of background first of all. If you recall, when I talked about the way that we are approaching CBTC now, and the way that we have reduced the timeframe from what was talked of 50 to 60 years down to 10, one of the elements I talked about was minimizing customization and simplifying interfaces. And the reason that's relevant in my answer to you is that I think we have learned lessons from the way that the CBTC installation has been done on Line 7. In that, going forward, I want to do that a different way. The, what any signal contractor will say to you is, it's, well, let me put this a different way. I'm saying to signal contractors, if you've got a signal system in Hong Kong, in Singapore, in London, in Berlin, or wherever, that works really well, I want one of those. And my guarantee will be, we won't try and customize it and try and change it too much to adapt it to our particular needs. I think one of the complexities with the Seven Line, which has had various challenges throughout its duration, not including the fact that Superstorm Sandy caused quite a delay in the rollout of the Line 7 signaling. I do think it's overly complicated. Now, we are where we are. The job, when I took over, was to get this thing across the line. And last week, we finally got the final cutover section done. But it is being done in a very complex manner. It's a bit of an amalgam between modern signaling, but still relying on track circuits. It's a bit technical, but there's still what are called track circuits there. Going forward, I want to use a different technology called axle counters, where you don't need track circuits. It takes out a lot of the complexity and a lot of the single points of failure. So I arrived too late to change that for Line 7. Imminently, I will be announcing the appointment to New York City Transit of a world-class CBTC practitioner who we're headhunting, we're bringing him in. I should be able to announce him imminently. And his mandate from me will be minimize or roll out the rest of this CBTC, but make sure we do it working with the contractor, keeping it simple, not customizing things, minimizing the interfaces. So there are reasons why it was delayed by a year. I think the fact that we have delays at the moment are indicative of the fact there are still bugs in the software. I have the contractor on speed dial. I speak to them once a week, every week. And we go through what remaining deficiencies there are in the software that still need to be addressed. Once they have stabilized that software, which will happen in coming weeks, then we can, it's not so much increase the express routes. What we will look to do is do two more things. One, move to what's called automatic train operation, which is where the operator doesn't even drive the train, same as on the L Line. The operator presses the start button and the train drives automatically. So you get very easy, very regular spacing between the trains. And it's no secret, by the way, that the L Line is by far the most punctual on the New York City subway. It's by far, it regularly 90% plus on time running. So Seven will get that. The other thing that we'll do, once this thing is stabilized, and in the spring, we're adding more trains. So we'll be able to run more trains on your, on Line 7. There'll be more line capacity.
What about the express bus service? The Queens?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, express bus redesign. I thought you meant express routes on.
Yeah, express bus.
So express buses, every route and every borough bus network is being redesigned over the next three years. We're currently in the Bronx. Queens will be assessed. And as part of that exercise, we will be looking to see what stakeholders, what communities want by way of more SBS. So we are looking to roll out more SBS. In fact, next year, we will roll out five more SBS routes, largely around the L Line project. But Queens, we will listen to what the community wants. If the community wants more SBS routes, then that can go into that thinking.
Yeah. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Richard, followed by Councilmember Miller and Reynoso. I also would like to acknowledge that we were joined by Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Miller Salamanca, and also Levin, Espinal, Caveras, Levin, Constantinides, Lander, and in chat.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for all this important hearing. And thank you, Mr. President, for all the work that you're doing. I want to congratulate you on coming up with an actual plan. So I want to move into, so in October of this year, we're about 56,139 delays. Does the MTA study the impact of delays on revenue? And if so, can you speak to the correlation between delays and revenue that's being lost? Whether it's via to Lyft and other ride hams?
Not directly with revenue. I mean, we do look to see if there's been a correlation between ridership and revenue. So effectively, that would be indirect. Because obviously, if your ridership drops, then you would have an adverse impact on revenue. But the main thrust has been to identify the root cause of those delays and then to progressively assign corrective actions against each of them, such that we can eliminate them. And so we have different pots of actions against each of the delay categories. But, you know, undoubtedly, there is a linkage between unreliable service and ridership. Because if you don't think you're going to get reliable service, there is a real risk that you will migrate.
So you would see a decrease in revenue because less people.
Yeah. If people migrated onto other means, such as Uber, for example, then you would see a decline in revenue. So you have to address that and arrest it.
And is there a correlation between fare hikes and fare evasion? So I want to hop into that because I did hear some of your comments this morning on fare evasions. And I'm just interested in hearing a little bit more about that. In the past, have the MTA looked at the correlation between fare hikes and fare evasion?
Well, I think just logically, if, the higher the fare goes, the more risk you run of people saying, I just can't afford it. But for which reason? I think it's encouraging, very encouraging. We very much welcome the action taken by city council to introduce the fare fares policy so that people on lower incomes do benefit, rightly so, do benefit from a reduced fare. You know, evading the fare really shouldn't be the option because you're putting yourself at risk of arrest if you do. So there should be a lower fare available to people on lower incomes. And we very much welcome the action you took to address that.
So we agree that addressing the fare evasion issue largely needs to be methods such as fare fares and solutions such as that, correct?
That plus adequate enforcement. I mean, you still have to have enforcement because it's not accurate to say that all fare evasion is by people that can't afford it.
So where do you, how do you make that judgment, Cole?
Well, I mean, in terms of the judgment.
You have data that backs that up.
Well, I think there's a limit to how much you can continue to ask people to pay more. I think that's a safe statement to make, that obviously people can only afford to pay so much. And it is for my board to determine against the backdrop of the MTA's funding requirements, the tipping point and whether that's been reached.
And so take me through with your station managers or whomever would oversee these processes. So I read that you'll block entrances, is that correct?
Sure. So that was my suggestion. What we're aiming to do is to show New Yorkers, the vast majority of whom do pay their fares, that we aren't just passively saying, oh, well, never mind, fare evasion is a phenomenon across the world, it just happens. I don't think that's fair to the people that pay. So what I'm advocating, and it's something that we've done, I've certainly participated in the UK and in Australia, is that we would on a rolling basis have senior managers, you know, volunteers, people that want to do it, and I'm saying that I will do it, stand on gate arrays to just greet customers, to be visibly there, to act as a deterrent to people who are chanting fare evasion. You know, it's getting that balance right, absolutely being sensitive to those people that can't afford the fare. And again, it's good that there's an option for them now. But equally, we can't just give the impression to those people that do pay that we're not taking action and thereby.
Okay, I have a few, just to wrap it up. So it is your belief, and I think we, I'm hearing commonality here, that jailing low-income, Black and Brown, largely New Yorkers for a low-level offense, which puts them back in the system, which eventually means that they won't be able to gain access to a job, which then means that to even get to a job appointment, you would need to have a job or access to money to actually get in the system. So I just want to be, point out that we should be very cautious in putting that message out because the revolving system means that they'll never pay. out, because the revolving system means that they'll never pay, and that will be permanent as we create an undercard system, which is already being created in New York City, or permanently mean that they will never be able to get on a train. And my last question is, do, do you believe that? So we pay for a service. When you pay for a service, that means you should get the service, correct? So if you go out and you buy a product, you would hope that that product works, correct?
Absolutely.
So if your train systems are not largely working, should New Yorkers have to pay for something that's broken and not necessarily working?
Okay, so I just want to make one final point in, in response to your previous point. I do understand we must be desperately careful to get the balance right between making sure that, you know, we're not just saying to people who do pay, it doesn't matter if people don't, because that, that's not fair to the, to the people that do pay. But equally, be very, very careful, and, and we will be explicit in our instruction or direction to the NYPD, to be very, very careful not to target certain communities. I cannot stress that enough. You have my commitment in public.
But there's no guarantee that that would happen, so.
So that, that, that would be a matter for the police. So we will hope, but we will be very careful to, to not give the wrong signal. So, you know, I say that in public, in public forum.
That signal has already been sent, so.
That is not our intention. That is not our intention.
Okay.
And, but in terms of, should people not pay if they don't get the service that they expect? I think we just got to be careful there, because you will, if you're not, if you're not careful, you will end up in a massive downward spiral. Because people then not paying means there's less money to provide service, which means service degrades, which means even fewer people pay, which means service degrades even further. No one, I'm sure, you yourself.
Got you. Last question before the chairman kicks me off, though. So should people receive a fare hike, last question, fare hike when service is horrible? Should you, I've never seen a scenario where we mark up the price on, for example, a lemon. Would you mark up the price on a lemon? A lemon is considered a hoop-dee, a horrible car. Would you mark the price, price up on a lemon times five? If the lemon is, could barely start, would you charge people the amount for Mercedes-Benz, the, the same amount for a lemon? So the point I'm getting at is that the service has been horrible. It's not been, I mean, we've seen some modest improvements, but to mark, to say we should now do a fare hike on the back of New Yorkers when service, where we still saw fifty-six thousand delays in October, I think is, is a poor move, and it doesn't show that we are getting at the crux of the issue, and that we're going to continue to charge and increase fares on the backs of New Yorkers, who largely, majority who are doing these fare evasions can't afford a fare hike. But to say we should now incorporate a fare hike, rather than getting at the, the systematic issues, one within the MTA, but secondly, looking at the other scenarios, such as congestion pricing, the millionaire tax, whatever scenarios we want to play with, but to say we should do a fare hike, fare hike at this point when the product isn't doing what it's supposed to do, I think is, is a poor judgment call, so.
Okay, so, so two points on that. One, a fare hike, whether we have one or not, is not, is not something that I can determine. That is a matter for the MTA board, and that that decision will only be taken once the fair hearings have been concluded and once the various public feedback has been received. That is a matter for the board, that's not a, a, a judgment call by me. Secondly, though, you, you slightly preempted what I would have said, which is what, what we really need is sustainable, affordable, predictable, sufficient revenue streams. Thank you, Councilman.
Let me interject with two questions before calling Councilman Miller. On the CBTC, on the Seven Train, and, and the question is more to see if you can give some light to what happened. Even after the signal system was upgraded, the new one, putting in the Seven Line, there was the announcement of delay. Were you able to look at the delay and were you able to correct? And can you explain to us what happened in Queens that day when, you know, as anything you have is in place, there is also space for readjustment? So where did the new signal system fail or needed to be improved in the Seven Line that produced that delay?
Okay. So can I just be clear? Are you talking about a specific failure or general problems that we've had on the Seven?
General, on the Seven Line.
Okay, so there, there have been a number of problems on the Seven Line in its first week of, of operations since it was, since the final cutover happened. Some were not CBTC-related. We had a fatality one afternoon. We had a switch failure on another occasion, which were nothing to do with the CBTC system, but others absolutely were to do with it. And the primary problem that we've been experiencing, there's, there's one particular signal that, that is giving us problem, that tell us the contractor are working on. The second problem relates to what's called a loss of localization, which is where the computer, because this is a, a completely a computer-driven system. The, the way this, the modern signaling works, the, the computer must know where trains are in proximity to each other and what their relative speed is, because that's how you maintain safe distance. You need to know where, where a train is in comparison to the one in front or the one behind, and what the, what the speed is that they're doing. So a number of trains were losing what's called localization, particularly around Thirty-Fourth Street on the west side of Manhattan. We now have a workaround around that. That problem will be fixed with a further software drop on the fifteenth of December. But we've, we've identified what the problem is with the contractor, and that problem is now contained.
And, and we've, Assessor Wright, that is so important, especially for the community that, with disability. I, we know when we look at the MTA, they reported that Assessor Wright have a three-hundred-and-ninety-two million in service contract in twenty-seventeen, and anticipate that service contract will reach five-hundred-and-forty-eight million in twenty-twenty-two, an increase of nearly forty percent. Between twenty-two and twenty-sixteen, paratrace trip have also dropped. So with that increase, with that services, that in the past, again, it was something that there was no trust. And we had to deal with that, with cleaning those dirty clothes, because this is about, here we are, new idea, new approach, by understanding that people are frustrated, have been frustrated. So with that, with the pilot of E-Hail program costing nearly half as much as Assessor Wright, is the MTA still accepting new application for the pilot? And does the MTA have any plan to expand the E-Hail pilot?
So the issue with E-Hail is that the actual unit cost of an E-Hail ride is around fifty percent of a big van ride. So the, the big vans that you see driving around New York cost double the amount of an E-Hail ride. So in theory, people would say, well, that's great. E-Hail is a massive cost-saving. However, for, for valid reasons, it is extremely popular, because it does give people spontaneity. It does mean that they can, you know, call up an E-Hail ride and enjoy the benefits that other people can enjoy, and, and why not? But, but that does mean that demand is surging. The pilot that we currently have, which is unlimited for the participants, we have a number of participants in the trial, they are not limited in the numbers of rides that they can call for, that they can request. And the, the, the demand is surging, such that the, the actual dollar amount has exceeded what we would have now paid for the big van rides. So we're still evaluating that. No decision has been taken. We definitely need to seek further funding in order to do what we want to do, and definitely what the community wants to do. There is an absolute clear demand from the community to not only maintain E-Hail, but to expand it. That comes at a cost, and we would like to find ways of accommodating that demand.
Great. And I got to say to my only Spanish-speaking audience, and Spanish is my only, is my native language, que hoy estamos aquí trabajando para asegurar que la MTA modernice la transportación de la ciudad, para que los trabajadores lleguen a tiempo a su lugar de trabajo, para que la persona llegue a las citas médicas en sus escuelas. Y hoy estamos en disposición de trabajar con la MTA, apoyarlo para que tenga los recursos necesarios. Pero la MTA debe asegurarse que va a controlar el costo y que va a trabajar para que la transportación de Nueva York sea eficiente y seguro para todos. With that, Councilman Miller, followed by Councilman Ramirez.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. President Wright, good to see you and your, your team as well. So obviously, I, I echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues about trying to new ambition. Skepticism, because I spent twenty-five days in the third, as well as had the opportunity to work in Barstool's Metro, Bard, CTA, and even TTC, as well in Toronto, I've seen changes of the lack thereof. And, and what I'm concerned with here, honestly, I think we can absolutely accomplish this on so many plans if we have the type of cooperation that, that is necessary. But my concern is, is the timetable of, of the plan, and whether or not we, we are neglecting state-of-good repair, whether or not we are putting certain communities over others. And my colleagues mentioned transportation equity. Transportation is the great equalizer. There are communities such as the one I represent, Councilman Richards, that this is a two-hour commute out, for me this morning was an hour and forty minute commute here to City Hall one way. One would think that those communities, those transportation visits would be the priority. This plan does not prioritize Southeast Queens and other communities such as that. And I'm not going to touch too much on trains, but it does not include the J Train, which supplements the E, the F, the L, which is going on now, runs on a regular local line. I think that we can do, because it has not reached its capacity, one of the few lines, that is why we can do that, that would impact the other lines. I want to talk about buses. The, the, the depot that, that's in the capital plan, hopefully we'll see knocked down in the next few months. Services, about seventy-five percent of Southeast Queens riding community, everybody takes a bus to the train, but we can't get there for some reason. We have the oldest and most antiquated depot in the system. I read in one of your reports that the duty time of buses were twelve years. And Jamaica Depot, one-third of the, of the fleet is from nineteen ninety-eight, right? They leak when it rains, and it's a problem. On the other side, as we procure new equipment, it seems to be that we're more focused on customer amenities, Wi-Fi, than safety. Chair mentioned Vision Zero, whether or not we have the Papa Maryas, whether we have the audio system that many fleets have, that has people step away from the bus as they make turns. These are the things that we should be focusing on to keep safe. But I also noticed that the older models, Seat forty-three, the ones that have been purchased over the past five years, Seat thirty-six, Seat thirty-one, Seat thirty-four, which impacts load guidelines and the amount of people that you can sit on there. As to, Councilman Richard mentioned, loss of revenue, we have the largest proliferation of commuter vans, dollar vans, underground transportation systems, simply because people can access buses. And so that's not only is it a surge of loss of revenue, but it's denying, but while other folks are getting ferries and trolleys and all these other things, it appears that there are other communities that their transportation options are illegal and unlawful, dollar vans. So how do we address that? Lift, but in this case, we have proliferation of illegal vans that carry people unsafely throughout the city.
Yeah. Okay, I might just comment, though, just generally on, on one of the points you made at the start, in terms of community equity. The fast-forward plan, it may not be as overt as it, it should have been, but it is designed to be equitable across the whole of the city, in that the elevators will be installed across the whole of New York, all five boroughs. The bus improvements are, are meant to address the whole of the five boroughs by the, the redesigns, the, the borough redesigns that we do. New vehicles will be spread throughout the five boroughs. Station renovations will be undertaken throughout the five boroughs. And even the CBTC, I get the point that you make about, say, the J and some of the extremities, but A, don't forget what I said, if UWB is a goer, then we might be able to do things more quickly. And B, people who live in some of those communities will still benefit from when they hit the core section, which has been addressed. And in, and in terms of focus on amenities, I agree with you, absolutely, state of good repair is job one. I've always said that in every job I've done. State of good repair should take precedence over expansion, and it should most certainly take precedence over nice-to-have aesthetics, if you like. And so certainly, new buses, we're now fitting, as they come into service, will be fitted with things like turn announcements on them. The dollar vans are a, are an issue. I mean, I understand why they're there. What we need to do is redesign the bus provision, such that we make bus travel exponentially more attractive, so that it's affordable, the vehicles are modern, the service is frequent, the service is reliable, and, and that you get vehicles commensurate with the demand. So we know that Jamaica Depot does need to be reconstructed. I was just checking that that is being awarded, that will be awarded in twenty-twenty. And the, we know that depot, that depot is an absolute priority for New York City Transit, to get it reconstructed, such that your community gets the vehicles it deserves.
Can I just, Chair, to finally, we talked about enforcement. Right now, New York City Transit Police don't have oversight on buses. And so incident occurs, and, and they have to, although you're transmitting with Radio Command Center, they didn't coordinate with NYPD. Why not New York City Transit and have dedicated folks, as he said, the chair? Buses, the main transportation hub, cannot get to the curb because vans are parked there. People are forced to load and unload in the middle of the street in the rain and the snow. And on top of that, to add insult to injury, and I, that's a bus lane. And so they come out, and they're depending whether or not they, they take it for being in a bus lane, or standing, or parking, or whatever it is. There has to be some continuity around enforcement, and, and it really has to happen now. So what, what I was saying in terms of the plan, I, I get the plan, but are we putting the chronological line of the plan above the needs, the community that had the highest need? And I'd like to see that taken.
Sure. So, and you make a very valid point, sir. And I attended a town hall in Jamaica fairly recently, and I saw firsthand issue caused by the dollar vans. I saw them all lined up, and I've heard firsthand from both customers and from operators about the problems that can be, can be caused by them. For example, the fact that the bus operators can't get to the curb. So we are looking at different options with police. At the moment, the precincts deal with street-level policing, rather than MTA police or the Transit Bureau. But it's something that's very much a hot topic within the organization right now. It's on my to-do list. And we are determined to make things better at places like Parsons Archer, where I was just the other day with Sarah, where we looked at what was going on with the dollar vans. So that, rest assured, that doesn't need the fast-forward plan, it doesn't need five years, it certainly doesn't need ten years, it's something that we're focused on right now. And I'll be happy to keep you appraised on, on how we're going, we're dealing with that.
But you know, what is, what we're missing in that piece is to be concrete as all pieces of your plan. What, New Yorkers, you know, we will increase the signal system by this number in this lane. How many, many women from, from traffic will be designated to enforce in bus lane? People like, people need to hear that. Because what happens is that if we leave, the NYPD will be enforcing, go the enforcement. Put it in a survey. Do you feel that the many women, the NYPD, should be responding to a crime or enforcing in the bus lane? All of us were saying the crimes. So my opinion, that's my suggestion, that as you are able to put your number, say, because a large numbers of people, they're not paying a fare when they get into the bus, we are losing close to three hundred million dollars. Well, how can? Well, how can we use $15 million, I mean, $50 million on those to enforce? Using technology and other things. So if we are able to do the assessment, you know, like I say, aside from before, the impact or the lack of enforcement in the bus lane, and we translate those hours that people are losing to go to work, to go to school, to go to any place, any destination, I feel that we can work together and support the creation of dedicated bus-traffic enforcement unit to be able to after anyone who blocks the bus. And if not the creation of a new unit, which I call for, at least to be specific, to come back as you're going to be moving into the approving of the void and say, "We have this conversation with NYPD, and from now on, there's going to be fifty many women only dedicated to enforcement." Unless that happens, people will not trust because there has not been enforcement when it comes to drivers blocking buses. And because of that, we've been seeing a reduction for riders using buses. It's not because of Uber, it's not because of Lyft. It's because it takes so long for the bus to go to the destination. So whatever we can do, and I know that that's experience, but I'm calling to create a dedicated bus-traffic enforcement unit as a solution to know who are responsible to go after those drivers who are blocking our lane every day.
May I just comment on that, Mr. Chairman? Just to put your mind at rest, I mean, the job one for me was to get the plan out and to get it socialized, to go out, which we've done, and to whet New Yorkers' appetite for that plan. And I think we've largely been successful on that basis. It's received a very good response from the advocacy groups. It's received generally a very positive reaction from stakeholder groups, from customers, actually, at town halls. But we absolutely know that to make the case, we need to really make the case, we need to do a couple of things. Number one, we need to make sure that we've really nailed the case for the associated budget, the finances, and we need to give assurance that the figures are robust and that they're well thought through, and that you can trust them and that you can hold them to us. And number two, to your point in the comments you just made, we are now quantifying the benefits that various elements of Fast Forward will bring. Some of them are fairly obvious because we can say definitively that within five years, you could be no more than two stops from an accessible station, which is a strong statement and definitive. But what we really want to do is things like, if we get this line converted to CBTC, this is the impact on you as an individual. It will mean you get a train every X minutes instead of the current every Y minutes. In other words, we'll be increasing the trains per hour by whatever percent. Typically, it's around 10%. We would, to your point about bus lanes, I think you make a valid point. It would be good if we were to be able to quantify, if this bus on this route, if the bus lane was entirely clear end to end, the journey time reduction would be X number of minutes. So I think that's a good suggestion. With that, we should be able to quantify. And it was always on our to-do list to come up with that quantifiable data as part of the selling case in the seminal run-up to the budget discussions in Albany in spring. We're on the case.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds will follow up.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, President Bradford, for being here. It's always good to see a state-led agency show up to the city council, first and foremost. I want to say, ask a couple of questions. The first one is your concern about having to take on, let's say, a six-month timeline to install an elevator due to, like, I guess, ULE processes or some type of processes that are slowing down. In a state of emergency, do you not have the authority to move forward with the building of, let's say, elevators for accessibility without consent or the need to get an authority from, I guess, the council or from the mayor or from the state?
No. To assert, what the State of Emergency EO 168 gave us was the ability to expedite procurement so that you could fast-track certain elements of procurement and fast-track certain elements of gaining authority. But that did not circumvent or replace the normal consultation timelines, which we would normally have to follow with local communities. So that's why I made the point I did earlier. We would still need your help to make that happen.
So I just want to first say, I'm here, letting you know, every elevator you want to build in my district, I will do everything I can to make sure that you have full authority to do it as you wish. If you want to start in Renner'sburg and Bushwick and Ridgewood, you have full authority. I will never stop you from doing one. It's the right thing to do, and we shouldn't be bureaucratizing you to a place where you can't get things done. Another thing that I just want to make note to you, the fare evasion situation is a problem, especially for communities of color, not because people shouldn't be paying their fare. There's a car culture here in the city of New York, where having a car has you at a certain standard or your health's a different standard. If you cover your license plate, and you run over a tow, the worst-case scenario you would get is a ticket from a police officer. If you're a black kid and you jump over the turnstile, the worst you can get is going to jail. There seems to be an inequity as to how we deal with fare evasions, depending on where you are, whether you're taking a train or you're in a vehicle crossing over the GW or the George Washington Bridge, for example. So understand that these equity issues really are a concern for us because we're not targeting more affluent car owners, but instead targeting mostly young people of color. So that is, the equity issue is a problem, not necessarily the fact that you need your money. I want to ask, related to your issues on the congestion pricing. Obviously, we have nothing to do here. That's a state issue. The state has to agree to do it. We've already actually had quite unanimous support almost in the council for you to get your congestion pricing to move forward. I want to ask, is there something else that you might need? Is congestion pricing the answer to it all? And if not, what else can we do to be helpful in our capacity as a city council?
So congestion pricing will go a long way to helping our needs. It will provide a revenue, a regular, sorry, revenue stream, which would rightly be absolutely dedicated to transit. Couldn't be siphoned off for anything else. It would be lockbox to provide specific defined output.
You say that, I just want to, you say that it's going to be lockbox.
Well, I should caveat that. My belief is it should be. In London, which I think is good practice, is it was. So Londoners had the confidence that the congestion charge they were paying could not go anywhere else. It had to go into London's transport system, and it did.
This is the state of New York, though. I just want to be clear. The state likes to take money and move it around.
I'm not making a political comment. I'm giving you my professional opinion. And will that, though, suffice? No. And that will not in itself, in isolation, cover the totality of what's required for both Fast Forward and the broader MTA and even New York City Transit's state of good repair funding issues. We still will need other mechanisms. And, you know, obviously, that's more of a decision for stakeholders. Some of the equity we can generate ourselves. We need to be looking imaginatively at different delivery models. We need to be looking at different funding mechanisms whereby we might be able to raise more through bonds or through other procurement methodologies that would contribute to the overall figure. But I've heard various proposals bandied about. It will be really for stakeholders to determine which are the most appropriate. All I know is, we need more money.
Okay. So you are going to need more money. And the last thing I'll leave you with is, the enforcement on bus lanes, it speaks back to our car culture. There's a privilege that drivers in the city of New York drive around with. That makes it so that running over a red, a red-painted bus lane or double parking is just a privilege, like a blind privilege, who they drive around with. And you, it's not your fault, it's a New York City infrastructure fault. We also have issues in our leadership here in the administration that doesn't understand that. So while we want these buses to move, so long as we continue to endorse and support car culture, it's going to be very hard. So just saying, it's not all your fault. You're doing everything you can. Enforcement won't necessarily work. It truly is about breaking car culture. But I thank you for your time here, and thank you, Chair, for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. That took as long as it takes a community to get to Staten Island on the express bus. I'm sorry. President Bradford. I think last night you heard a resounding cry that Staten Islanders don't want a fare hike or a toll hike. Staten Islanders feel that, you know, that if the services were delivered, then it would warrant an increase. But the lack of service does not warrant an increase. And the bridge toll is already ridiculously high and that we shouldn't be paying to subsidize other systems. So the complaints that we've heard about the Fast Forward bus tracking is that people have to walk on busy streets with unpaid walkways to bus stops that are, you know, really far distances. And it creates a problem for people who have mobility issues. Our rides have increased sixty minutes each way, which makes it a hundred-and-twenty-minute increase than it was before, especially the Midtown routes, the Fifth Avenue route, the X fourteen. And that we need more buses because people are standing now on the buses and the afternoon schedules start or resume too late. That people who are religious observers, people can't get home in time for the Sabbath before sundown. And so while, I have to say, I have to give you credit, you've been responsive to our constituent complaints as we relay them, and some adjustments have been made. It just seems as if the changes were made without enough input from the commuters. For example, we were constantly asking and calling the MTA to put notices on the buses that, you know, about the changes, about the hearings. And every day, we would get, you know, feedback that there were not notices on the buses that people were actually taking to work that would have informed them of the changes. So I want to know how many people ride the express buses to and from Staten Island? And how many did we hear from during this process when you were formulating the plan? And if in hindsight, in retrospect, do you think that the plan was rolled out before you really addressed the riders' concerns? And how many complaints have you received? And, you know, to what extent have you tried to address them? And if in fact, there were any lessons that you've learned from, you know, the fallout from Staten Island Express bus riders? And have you formulated a way to do better outreach with the redesign of the systems for the other boroughs?
Sure. Okay. So thank you for the question. I mean, I enjoyed being back on Staten Island last night. And yeah, absolutely, I heard what people had to say. And that was the whole purpose of what is at the end of the day at Town Hall. So there are thirty-six, I think it's thirty-six thousand trips that are taken daily on Staten Island Express buses. So that's trips. That's not individuals, but that's trips. So it might be return journeys or something like that.
So that's buses going back and forth?
Yeah, sure. So thirty-six thousand trips. And although I don't have the exact number to hand, we're just checking to see if we can get the complaints number. You asked, how many people did we consult? Again, I'd have to take that on notice. But I came into this process about halfway through. And certainly, if my experience is anything to go by, I went to a number of the town halls that we had, a number of the consultative sessions. And I would say that we, I can confidently say we consulted with certainly thousands of people in various ways. There were people who were consulted face-to-face at various community centers on Staten Island and through various other media. The, would we do things differently? I think what has to be said is this is the first time we've ever done this. We set out to respond to what we were hearing from both Staten Islanders, to a certain extent elected officials, but certainly from operators themselves, who were telling us that there was an overriding desire to change the bus network to make it quicker to get off the island because each of the, the average, the average number of stops to get off the island was something like twenty-seven. So the buses went on this hugely circuitous route around the island before you even departed the island, and that was frustrating people. So we aimed to straighten some of the routes. And what was also frustrating people was that what happened when the buses got to Manhattan, that there was a feeling that the buses didn't adequately serve Midtown or West Street and that they got hopelessly caught up going around the loop at the south side of Central Park, which is why the redesign happened in the way it was. Did we get everything right? Well, I think the evidence would suggest, no, we didn't. Because while there's a lot of people who have said they do like the new service, and typically, you don't hear from them, there is definitely still a vociferous group that don't like the new service, that feel for them services degraded. We can point to the fact that the average speed of the bus network has increased. We can point to the fact that the punctuality has improved. But I recognize that for some people, they don't see that, and that's why we're continuing to make changes.
You know, I would agree with you if it was a small number of people that were dissatisfied. And if we were just talking about the fact that their walk to the bus stop increased, you know, somewhat. But we're talking about the elimination of that whole Midtown route and that people's ride has increased exponentially over what they were getting home before. And that there are lack of buses in the evening where the service started earlier in the afternoon. That doesn't exist. So we've taken, you know, we've done a wonderful job with the circuitous routes, but by eliminating them, it just seems as if you streamlined the bus routes to save costs and not really looking at what the need was for the ridership. And, you know, and I don't know. Have you saved any costs by these?
No, 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 no. It's actually costing us more. And so the primary driver wasn't actually to save costs. The primary driver was to attempt to streamline the routes in, to give, to have a fresh look at the network, to give people what they wanted now in 2018, rather than a route network that was designed years ago and arguably was no longer fit for purpose, which is effectively the philosophy behind the whole of the bus redesigns.
Then why are people standing on the buses? I mean, in the community that comes through Mariner's Harbor, people are standing for the duration of the trip.
So we are, we are looking at that, and there's a further raft of changes happening next month in January to try to further address that. The one counsel I would put forward is, I think some people, not yourself, with the greatest respect, some people, to a certain extent, view the former network through rose-tinted spectacles in that, you know, it was always on time, there was never any standing. Well, there was. You know, it's not as though this is a new phenomenon. Sometimes people did stand on the old X network. My commitment to you...
But not the same volume.
My commitment to you and to the Borough President is we will not let up until we get this Staten Island bus network as good as it can be. And if I really thought that the answer was to say, right, you know, no shame, sorry, let's just scrap it, let's go back to the X network, then I would. But I'm not going to need you to do that because there are equally people who tell us they really like the new network. For them, it's work. So the outstanding challenge is to still address those deficient points that still exist. And my commitment to you is that we will not let up until we've done that.
I'm glad to hear that. I'll be in touch.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, and the number of complaints, by the way, was eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight for October. Eight-eighty-eight for October.
Thank you.